Brownsville Area School Board of Direction will be in regular session on Thursday, April 17th, 2014 at Brownsville Area School Auditorium. One thousand five hundred and five Brownsville PA for general purposes. Roll call please.
Mr. Assett. Mr. Bate.
Here.
Mr. Bershier.
Here.
Mr. Delarose.
Here.
Mr. Dorsey.
Here.
Mr. Gates.
Here.
Mr. Harvey. Mr. Sealy.
Here.
Mrs. Teravich.
Here.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, free and liberty and justice for all. Nicholas in the front row. All right, item two, we won't keep you long here tonight, but the superintendent's gonna make a few remarks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to announce to everyone here tonight that the Brownsville School District received a $175,000 technology grant. It will be for the expansion of our distance learning program and purchasing of new technology. We've had distance learning in the past, this will upgrade our current equipment. We will be looking at increasing, or we will be able to increase, programs for our students via in our lab, working with other schools, not only locally, but anywhere in the world. Anywhere in the world. We're also looking at staff development, rather than sending teachers out, we can have our teachers here and we can train our staff that way. Also, as part of our vision, we are looking to work with businesses. There are more and more businesses that want to tie in with not only schools, but other businesses. And in the past few months, we've become an entrepreneurship center for academic programs, but we're opening up our distance learning lab for businesses who want to talk to other businesses for ideas or training, as well as businesses and industry working with our students, so we're very excited about that. We also received a $5,000 grant from the Community Foundation of Fayette County to initiate our AP Physics Program. On Tuesday, we introduced the first entrepreneurship competition of Fayette County. It included Brownsville, Elvergallton, and Uniontown. We were very proud of all of our students, they were very excited about the competition. It consisted of a two-minute presentation of a product that they wanted to sell. We had judges from the three districts. I feel it's a very good start. We had the Fayette County Chamber of Commerce present. We had Representative Deborah Kula here, she's been active in it from the very beginning. Mrs. Snyder, who is our representative, could not make it. We also had Fayette County representatives here. We also received a citation from the House of Representatives for initiating a new program like this in the county, so I'm very proud of that, proud of our staff. Mr. Mahan, who is our teacher of the entrepreneurship program, has done an excellent job. Very proud of our kids. They worked very hard at it throughout the day and at home. I'm very proud to make this announcement. We've been working with the Laurel Highlands Air Force ROTC program to initiate an ROTC program here. There's a new program out where it's a JROTC Hybrid Distance Learning Program, where students who are interested in the ROTC can take an online program here and then so many days a week will travel to Laurel Highlands to utilize the training that goes on there for physical training and the marching exercises and such. I was notified today by Mrs. McLoy, because we started our scheduling, that we have 24 students signed up. I'm very proud of that, very proud of our children, I think it's a necessity here and we've been able to bring it to our students. So, very proud of what we're doing there. Also, at this point, to give you an update, as you see on our practice field, we started activities, the drilling and surveying for our new elementary project. At this point, our practice field will be moved to behind the Hiller Elementary School. What you see will be a continuation, so we're going to have to limit any activities on that side of the field. Also, at this time, I would like to introduce Mrs. Lasik, our biology teacher. She has a program from the Environmental Club.
All right, last year, we started an environmental club at the high school and to try and make our school more green, and I'm very, very pleased that some of our environmental club members are here tonight to share with you our accomplishments and some of the programs that we're involved in. Our mission is to stimulate environmental consciousness in our community, move our high school in a direction that is more environmentally friendly, map a future that is sustainable, and overall make our school and community more green. In the environmental club this year, our goal was to make the cafeteria more eco-friendly. Our goals are to reduce the usage of styrofoam in the cafeteria and to facilitate environmental cooperation in our cafeteria. In the middle school, the alternative lunch, which includes peanut butter and jelly, yogurt, and a cheese stick, has been changed from a plastic plate to paper boats. Also, a salad bar was introduced and hard trays are used instead of styrofoam. In the high school, we have added a recycling can to the cafeteria for bottles and cans, and we have placed signs in the cafeteria, hallway, and salad bar line as an option not to use a styrofoam tray when getting a salad. Mrs. Amy Keeler, our food service director, is working with us to convert styrofoam trays to biodegradable paper trays. She's a member of the Pittsburgh Regional Food Service Directors Association, which allows our schools to participate in Pittsburgh Regional Food Service Directors Buying Consortium. If enough districts commit to buying a biodegradable paper tray, it will make the bid and the price more affordable.
In our school, we have a bottle and can recycling program. We have recycling bins placed throughout the school, and about once a week, or maybe once every two weeks, we do collect them and send them to a recycling center. Also, we have an e-recycling program in which we recycle old printer cartridges, old phones, and other unused electronics.
For Earth Day this year, our club is going to Central Elementary School to teach about the environment.
This past November 15th, we participated in America Recycles Day and ran a program in the cafeteria to promote recycling.
The American Chemical Society partnered with Procter &amp; Gamble in collaboration with the U.S. Center for Disease Control to start the Coins for Cleaner Water Program. They developed a water purification packet that purifies two and a half gallons of water. This year, we raised enough money to buy 1,850 packets. This purifies 4,620 gallons of water.
Recently, we've spoken to Bob Carson, the Director of Public Works for the Fayette County Department of Solid Waste Management, and he's working with the DEP on getting a recycling receptacle outside of our high school. We are very proud of our community, and recently, we've been doing things like participating in roadside cleanups with PA Cleanways.
We've also assisted the Isaac Walton League, the Brownsville Chapter, with the annual fishing derby at Hillman Park.
We've also assisted the Isaac Walton League Greensburg Chapter in stocking trout in Ten Mile Creek.
If the pending grant is approved, we will collect a used discarded fishing line and put it into PVC receptacles throughout Dunlap Park. We've also, at the end of the fishing season, we will collect all of the fishing line and send it to a recycling center.
By making these changes, we are improving the way that we are viewed, demonstrating how our schools should treat the environment and that we care about our earth and the school. The Environmental Club would like to thank Dr. Sabini, the board members, our principals, and the community for taking the time to listen to our presentation.
I'd like to thank Mrs. Lasik and the students. We met a few months ago, and they really put together a nice program very quickly, and it's very efficient, and we commend you all, so thank you very much. Finally, we have one last award for some of our teachers and our building principals, Mrs. Amy Goody. Mr. LaGrane, would you please step forward here and onto the stage? Mrs. Goody, any staff?
Hi, everyone. My name is Terry LaGrane. I am here on behalf of the American Cancer Society and also Pike Chevrolet in Mason Town. In 2013, I organized a work for breast cancer for the North Central West Virginia region. The event took place at Pike Chevrolet in Mason Town with the participation of many businesses and the state reps like Pam Snyder. We all know the effect of breast cancer and cancer in general, but I am really here to make the school world aware and so you can also recognize all the effort that has been made from the children of Central Elementary School. Brownsville parents, including myself, should be proud of the engagement and guidance made from the teachers to create hundreds of drawings, challenging kids to open their mind in representing the Making Stride events. Survivor and all participants were able to walk with a symbolic drawing on that day. We raised an amount close to $5,000, but most of all, we were able to walk and support survivors and pray for the ones that have been lost along the way. None of this could have been possible without my first contact to the principal of Central School, Mrs. Goody. Mrs. Goody, I want to say publicly how proud I am of the way you responded, but most of all, of the dedication you are giving to every student that attended your school, including mine. The school was already issued a certificate of recognition from Harrisburg, signed by Pam Snyder for their participation. Please be sure to make the student aware that the effort was also recognized by the American Cancer Society. Thank you very much, kids.
And on behalf of my staff, Mrs. Brozki that's present this evening, the students of Central Elementary School, I thank you very much for this opportunity, and we really enjoyed ourselves in the walk as well, so thank you very much.
That concludes my remarks, Mr. President. Thank you.
As you can see, there's a lot of good things happening with our students and staff, not only in the community, but also academically, so I'm very proud of everyone, and this is the icing on the cake for me. Every nine weeks, we get to look at these students here that work hard and are future leaders in our community and elsewhere. So, we'll start with Mr. Burdard and Cox Stanahey.
Good evening. Just a reminder to parents and guardians, before we hand out our awards, that after your children receive their awards, we will escort them to the back of the auditorium, and they will assemble there, and you may pick them up after everyone has received their awards, so we will be in the rear of the auditorium. But at this time, I would like to recognize those students from Cox Stanahey, who received the superintendent's award for the second nine weeks grading period. We will start with kindergarten, Richard Graham. Brayden Burdard. Emmy Lloyd. Sienna Martinez. Elizabeth McCune. Caitlin Miskey. Gabriella Spina. And Kaylee Thomas. Next, from first grade, Alexander Booker. Bryce Herobick. Michaela Johnson. Aleah Kelly. Luke Glendilius. Sarah Nudel. And Harmony Sledge. Second grade, Paige Ansel. Anna Clister. Lucas Raymond. Daniel Sethman. And Megan Velosky.
I'd like to add that the snacks are being donated by the BEA. Next, Central, Mrs. Goody.
At this time, I would like to recognize the students of Central Elementary School for the second nine weeks. Grade three students, Mallory Dugan. Evan Robinson. Angel Johnson. Rodley Rankin. Ian Ryan could not attend this evening, neither could Michael Steffson. Grade four student, Tyler Duda. Alexis Fenton. Aleah Jordan could not attend this evening. Jeremy Nicholson. Megan Salca. Nirvana Yowler. Grade five student, Cameron Brozki. Nicholas Kleins. Laura Domer, who was unable to attend this evening. William Keiger. Desiree Vernon. And also Ashton Rapowski, who was unable to attend.
Now, the middle school, Mr. Clemmer.
I would like to recognize the following students from the Brownsville Middle School. Eighth grade, Elena Carney. Nodded attendance, seventh grade, Jada Jones. And unable to attend also, sixth grade, Mackenzie Kelly.
Mr. Koushak, high school.
All right, first up, we have representing the freshman class, Ms. Alicita. Representing the sophomore class, but he couldn't be here because he's also representing Brownsville High School baseball, right now is Corey Lent, sophomore class. Representing the junior class, Nick Gardner. And fresh off their victory over Laurel Highlands tonight, Ms. Ashley Dubus.
Just want to point out too, if you can look, we've put a few things on a bulletin board here just to show that Brownsville's moving in the right direction. Still have a long way to go, but our students are very active, not only in the community, but a lot of our community programs are tied in with our academics, so I'm very proud of our students and staff for the hard work they do, so if you get a chance after the meeting, if you're around, take a look, and you'll see the good work that we do. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna continue on with the meeting, so now's your chance to bell out. But should you choose to stay, we certainly would welcome you. All right, item three. Item three, public remarks on agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name, nature of business. Anyone wishing to speak on agenda items only, please come forward and state your name and nature of business. Is it an agenda item? If it's not, you have to wait until the end of the business meeting, okay? All right, very good. Scene 01. Item four, adoption of agenda and related materials for cooperation in the minutes. Motion by Director Terevecchia. Seconded by Director Sealy. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Item four, approval of the March 20th, 2014 Board Minutes. Motion by Director Terevecchia. Seconded by Director Sealy. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Item six, Director Bain.
Approve. Approve the February 2014 General Fund, Capital Fund Title I and Title II, A, II, D, Cafeteria Fund, Treasure, and Financial Return.
Motion by Director Bain, seconded by Director Terevecchia. Questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Assett.
Yes.
Mr. Bate.
Yes.
Mr. Bershier.
Yes.
Mr. Delarose.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Gates.
Yes.
Mr. Sealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Teravich.
Yes.
Item seven, approval of the following funds you see before you. That motion. Motion by Director Terevecchia. Seconded by Director Bain. Questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Assett.
Yes.
Mr. Bate.
Yes.
Mr. Bershier.
Yes.
Mr. Delarose.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Gates.
Yes.
Mr. Sealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Teravich.
Yes.
Item eight, solicitor report, Mr. Davis. Thank you. Education Director Dorsey.
Item eight. I move to approve the revised 2013-14 Brownsville Area, Mr. Calender, with graduation set on June 6th, 2014.
Motion by Director Dorsey, seconded by Director Terevecchia. Questions? Question. Graduation date is June 6th, students will remain in class till the 12th, okay? I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye, opposed?
Item B. I move to approve the 2014-2015 Brownsville Area, Mr. Calender.
Motion by Director, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Motion by Director Dorsey, seconded by Director Terevecchia. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed?
Item C. I move to approve the agreement between Brownsville Area School District and NSH Pennsylvania. NSH Ellsworth Autism School agrees to provide the following components for the district's extended school year educational programming. Autism School, autism classroom, plan, programming for four students, cost for this Cost for this service is $91.79 per student, per day, for a slot of 23 days.
I have a motion by Director Dorsey, second by Director Terevecchia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Assen.
Yes.
Mr. Bershier.
Yes.
Mr. Delarose.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Gates.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey. I'm sorry, Mr. Sealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Terevecchia.
Yes.
Item D. I move to adopt the state policies that ensure that every child three or four years old in Pennsylvania can access high quality pre-K and as a result will more likely be ready for kindergarten.
Motion by Director Dorsey, second by Director Terevecchia. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed.
Item E. I move to accept an agreement between Slippery Rock University and Brownsville Area School District for nursing internships.
Sir.
Motion by Director Dorsey, second by Director Terevecchia. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed.
And item F, last one here. I move to operate the summer food service program.
Motion by Director Dorsey, second by Director Bain. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed. Personnel. Mr. Delarose.
Item A. I move to approve the request from Stacy Lent for maternity leave of absence starting May 16, 2014, and continuing through the entire 14-15 school year. She would like to incorporate the Family Medical Leave Act starting September 2014 through November 2014.
Motion by Director Delarose, second by Director Terevecchia. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed.
Item B. I move to add the following names to the professional substitute list. Mary Jo Barnhart, Catherine Reagan, Ashley Zalum, and Nicole Turkovic.
Motion by Director Delarose, second by Director Terevecchia. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed.
Item C. I move to add the following names to the non-professional substitute list. Kayla King and Jerry Wertz.
Motion by Director Delarose, second by Director Terevecchia. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed.
Item D. I move to accept the attached letters of retirement from the following professional staff members effective the conclusion of the last day of the second semester of the 2013-14 school year. Ms. Charmaine Gates, second grade teacher. Ms. Mary Lee Stewart, second grade teacher.
By Director Delarose, second by Director Terevecchia. Questions?
Just like to thank these two for their commitment to the school district.
These are really great teachers here.
I agree. Many years of service, right there. All in favor? Aye, opposed.
Item E. I move to approve Michael Gigliotti as district representative and Phil J. Savini Jr., Ph.D., as district alternate representative to the IU One Health Consortium.
Motion by Director Delarose, second by Director Terevecchia. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed. Finance Director Bain.
Mr. President, before we go into finance, I would like to make a motion to adopt a policy that the public can speak at the beginning of the meeting no more than three minutes on any agile item.
Any item or any agile item?
Any, any item. Any item. The limit of three minutes at the beginning of the meeting. I am very disappointed that the public comes to speak and we go into executive session and they got to wait and wait and wait. When the end of the meeting comes, they don't get to make it or they have other obligations. And I feel that it would be fair to give them an opportunity to speak at the beginning of the meeting.
I could agree with you, but Monday night's a planning session. This is a business meeting. I don't have a problem with the public speaking before, during, or after. My problem is Monday night, there's no one here. Thursday night, that's when you have complaints to us that we can't address because we don't know them.
Well, last month, Mr. Bershier, what upset me is a gentleman come to speak at the beginning of the, of the meeting. And it was not available to talk on Monday night because we knew nothing of the situation on a Monday night. So I feel I'm going to sit, listen to the public before or after, so it doesn't matter to me if they come at the beginning of the meeting. I would like to, I'm just making a motion to put it on the, to put it on the agenda tonight.
A second.
They had to see the agenda.
My only question on that is meetings run according to Rob's rules of order? Is this a variation from it or not?
No, my understanding is that we can, it's up to the board to permit. Can every, you cannot put comments or agenda items at the back.
Right. This is a motion right now?
We have a motion and a second to adopt this into the agenda. Kevin. I have a motion and a second. Questions on this motion?
I don't really have a question, just a comment. I agree with you, Rob, that Thursdays are a business meeting, but I mean, regardless of whether they speak before or after, it's no consequence to me. However, it would be appreciated if there were items that needed to be discussed that Monday would be the day they chose to do that, you know?
I have to agree with that also. And as far as the executive sessions, hopefully we can get everything done on Mondays from now on and not have to leave, let people wait for an hour, an hour and a half every meeting, every Thursday. I understand things do come up between Monday and Thursday, but there should never be an executive session unless something important comes up. So this way, people won't have to wait half hour or half hour.
I agree with you, and Monday night isn't.
And I'll speak to anybody anytime.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to speak on that on the executive session. Executive session, a solicitor's not always available on a Monday night. Sometimes we need to ask that solicitor questions on a Thursday night because that's when the solicitor's available. So we can't say that we're not going to have executive session on Thursday nights.
I never said that. I said, there's things that do come up between Monday and Thursday.
But there's things that come up Monday that aren't there to ask on.
Well, since I've been on the board, I've never seen one come up.
I was, I asked a question for legal counsel on Monday night. There was no, no, no legal counsel here to ask, so I may have to ask that question tonight.
Well, you can always request the legal be there for Monday.
Right.
You want to pay him on Monday night?
Right, you can do that.
I just make a question. I don't care how anybody stands.
Okay, good.
I have no, I have no question about what you're saying. All I'm saying is this Thursday is reserved for a business meeting. After the executive session won't come up, and you know where I stand with this executive session. I don't, I'm not a proponent of them. To me, it's a lot of waste and a lot of time keeping the public out. But I certainly don't want to be here at a business meeting. Have remarks made that we cannot answer?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that it had a time limit.
And they have after the, after the end of this meeting.
I understand that. That's why I made a motion with a time limit because I sure wouldn't want somebody rambling out there, taking up too much of the time.
Rob, I've been on this for 14 years or so, and I can count on one hand the amount of time somebody actually came to a planning session to discuss things at a planning session, which is the place where they should be doing it.
I agree.
And, and, and my thing is that is where they should be coming.
I agree.
A planning session, they have an open audience in, at the planning session.
They have all the time running up and they can speak as long as they want. There is no time limit in a planning session to talk to us.
Discuss it all night long.
I agree.
And it's.
Placing it before the business meeting may, may delay things and, and it's still, you know, we may not be able to come up with the answers even though they're speaking first anyhow. You know, it's been done for years where they speak at the end and it hasn't been really a problem. You know, be perfectly honest, and I think.
I look at the audience today and say that has a difference.
A lot of it is the camera and the newspaper.
Right.
Not here on Mondays, but they're here Thursdays. People know that, so they're going to come and chastise the district. Some of them have good complaints, but there's a procedure that we've used. I mean, I can understand Mr. Bain's concerns, but I'm here on a business meeting. Everybody, I'm going to vote the way I feel, giving everybody an opportunity to speak before and during the meeting, as most school districts do. So we have a motion and a second. The added to, this is to add to the agenda.
The business meeting, it's, the way I look at it, until we adjourn, we're still in a business meeting.
Absolutely.
So to have public comments in the beginning or at the end, I, how, how does that affect? I'm just asking, because it appears as though you're opposed to that, so.
Oh, I'm not, never opposed to public comment. I've never been in my 18 years.
How does that lengthen though?
Well, I think what happens on a Monday, if they come Monday, we can answer their question by, I'm having it ready by Thursday. They come tonight and make, I, I personally wouldn't know. Administration runs the schools, so if they have a concern, I can't tell them yes, no, or use myself.
But you can't do that at the end of the meeting either. That's, that's all I'm saying. I, I'm not, I'm just not following what you're saying from that standpoint because I don't see that we might be able to answer at the beginning or the end. Doesn't matter where the comments made.
Well, in, in my experience here, most of the time on the board, the administration's never aware of the comments that are made here. At least that's why I understand when they come here, we have to investigate it. So, I mean, I, I can, I understand what you're saying about the board, but if you wouldn't put a three minute time limit, I could never.
It has to have time.
Well, someone's got to enforce it too.
Okay, this is to, this is to not the agenda. Take a roll call vote.
Mrs. Terevecchia?
No.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
What do we vote on?
Add this to the agenda.
Don't we have, have that public comment first?
Once we add it.
Once we add it.
After we add it, then you're going to.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
No.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Bershier?
No.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Assen?
Yes. Total?
Five.
Pass. Okay, so I need public comment on this item before I can proceed with the vote on it. Correct? Mr. Davis. Okay. Anyone make a comment on this item? Adding it to the agenda. Okay, now.
Still be under this policy department. That vote would now have to take place, add it to the agenda, or we put that on at the end of the agenda.
No, it goes right now?
Right now.
It go right now, so.
I'm making a motion to add public comment with a limit of three minutes to the beginning of the board business meeting.
A second.
On agenda and non-agenda items.
And I have a motion and a second. You have that. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Assen?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Bershier?
Pass.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
No.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Terevecchia?
No.
Mr. Bershier? Pass.
Make, make a note that I, as a recording secretary, like to monitor this, this motion.
If we're going to allow public comment, I say we open it up now instead of making people wait. I agree with that. I was willing to do it.
Public comment on any agile, any agenda item, I'm sorry.
With the limit of three minutes.
Hi, my name's Carrie Maston, and.
We'll have to speak up louder for the recording secretary.
I'm here because of, first, I thank everybody for what they do for the district and the time you take for each student. And I'm very happy with the education that all of my children have received. I have a letter here that I feel each of you should read and maybe help me understand the contents of it. And keep in mind that my son is class president, vice president, and just help me understand why this was given to him. So if anybody wants to read it.
Have you talked to anybody yet?
No, he has one there and I haven't talked, but we have nine, but one on one.
I, I don't.
It's the wording.
Yeah.
It's not that he did not get in, it's the wording.
To be honest, I can't give you an answer until I talk to the principal and the teachers.
Right.
I understand what you're saying, but I, I can't give you an answer. If you could see me after, maybe I can get a clarification quickly after the meeting.
Is that fair?
Then I can, maybe you and I can talk, maybe give you more information, then I can go for you, okay?
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak on anything? Please come forward, state your name and nature of business.
Just want, Suzie, I just have one question. I know what the chain of command is for the SEIU. I just, as the president of the union, I just need to know the chain of command through administration to the superintendent, then to the school board. What's the chain of command?
Depending on the issue, the administration, building, administrators, principals, buildings and grounds, cafeteria.
Okay.
They're the top. They can direct their workforce. I also can direct the workforce.
So you can override?
Yes.
You can, you have the authority to override. What about the school board? Where does that stand?
During meetings, the school board can give direction and directive to superintendent and or administrators.
So they can intervene in issues as far as work ethics, union issues, they can, or they hire up? I mean, I, I don't, I don't get it because something's going to come down. I just need to know where this is going to go because someone's going to pay a price.
Suzie, when I get a phone call from a parent or there's a situation, the first question I always ask, have you talked to the building principal?
Okay.
If I get a no, then I said, you need to, I refer, you need to go talk to your building principal. Then if there's no satisfaction, then talk to the superintendent. When there's those things come to me, you know, my job's to defer them to the people we hire to handle these situations. We pay people a lot of money to do this, so if it's in Mr. Bergar's building, I don't call Mr. Bergar. Usually they do what's resolved. You know, sometimes it doesn't get resolved, it comes to Dr. Savini, but that's usually, you know, and then if there is a situation that goes beyond that, then it comes to the board.
Now, Suzie, is a, is a board, we can't tell, I can't tell Mr. Bergar.
See, that's what I thought because I've been digging into this.
That's not our job. We don't, that's not what we're here for.
Okay, because see, I don't, I try to work, I try to work with Dr. Savini, which we do. The administration is for the, is the principals and Mr. Jacob and that, but my thing is though, there are some issues occurring and it's getting out of control. I'm trying to get a hold of it, but it seems like I can't because it's, I, I don't have the control over it because school board keeps stepping in. I just need to know the chain of command, so when I pursue this, I want to be doing the right thing.
You're saying the school board steps in? I would not classify it and say the school board.
Right.
Okay, well, I, I apologize. I apologize. Okay, but all I'm asking is for the chain of command.
Suzie, let me, let me clarify something and what Mr. Dorsey's also saying. Keep in mind that when this meeting is adjourned, every board member here becomes a private citizen.
Okay.
They have no powers until they meet again in session, planning session, and a board meeting. Because the only time anything can be voted on, transpired, policy set, changes made, once we, once we hit this gallon at the end of this meeting, there is no more power, I don't know if you want to call it power, until next month. This man is in charge, principals are in charge, maintenance, those people run the district for that month. Now, board members might make concerns.
Right, and, okay, yeah, I see, I understand, I understand that.
And we have committees.
Excuse me?
We also have committees and chairpersons.
Okay, and I understand that too, but in my position, okay, I gotta do what I gotta do, and this just didn't occur. I've just been trying to work and work and work, well, guess what? I can't work no more like this, because something is gonna hit the fan and the district is gonna pay dearly.
No board member can direct any employee to do anything when they're not sitting here.
That's what I thought, and I just wanted clarification on that, I wanted to know what the chain of command was.
That directive would take a vote of five on an individual vote.
Correct, we can't act as one.
We cannot act as one.
We can't, we can't tell anybody else what to do.
Okay.
We cannot direct workforce.
Okay. Thank you.
Is it, did we clarify the question that you had?
Yes, you did, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, it's your last chance till next month. Okay, seeing no one, proceed. Finance?
Make a motion to acknowledge a notice of rule for judicial sale from the Washington County Tax Revenue Department on the following parcels, parcel ID six seven zero 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 four zero 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 two zero 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 two zero zero, six seven zero 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 four zero 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 two zero zero four zero zero, six seven zero 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 four zero 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 two zero zero five zero one, six seven zero 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 six zero 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 three zero zero one five zero zero, and six seven zero zero one zero 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 one zero zero one one zero zero.
Motion by Director Bane, second by Director Terevecchia, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Acid?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Beshear?
Yes.
Mr. Delaro?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Terevecchia?
Yes.
I, I move to renew the agreement between Brownsville Area School District and American Management Advisors for Student Accident Insurance with the same benefits and premiums as last year. The current benefits are Plan A primary for a one million dollar, with the primary with a one million dollar medical maximum including all sports other than senior high school football.
Motion by Director Bane, second by Director Terevecchia, questions? Roll call please.
Mrs. Terevecchia?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delaro?
Yes.
Mr. Beshear?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Acid?
Yes.
I move for, for top purchase owner controlled insurance program offered through the PSBA Insurance Trust for the new elementary complex building at a premium of twenty-two dollars seventy-one cents per thousand with Liberty Mutual Insurance.
Second. Motion by Director Bane, second by Director Terevecchia, questions? Uh, what is the, the top limit on that, and how much are we wanting?
We're buying, the estimate right now is fourteen and a half million dollar, the estimated cost of the project, but if change orders come in and maybe go up or down, just forty, the rate will be twenty-two seventy-one per thousand of construction, and it's hard cost, only non-sawn cost.
Roll call please.
Mr. Acid?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Beshear?
Yes.
Mr. Delaro?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Terevecchia?
Yes.
I move to purchase builder's risk insurance on the new elementary complex at a premium of thirteen thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars with Liberty Mutual Insurance.
By Director Bane, second by Director Terevecchia, questions?
Mrs. Terevecchia?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delaro?
Yes.
Mr. Beshear?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Acid?
Yes.
I move to acknowledge disabled veteran property tax exemption from the Department of Military and Veterans Affairs.
Second.
Director Bane, second by Director Terevecchia, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I move to approve the senior class picnic at Kennywood Park on May thirtieth, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Motion by Director Bane, second by Director Terevecchia, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Buildings and grounds, Director Acid.
I'm going to go to executive session, personnel.
A motion by Director Acid?
Second.
Second by Director Terevecchia for personnel?
Yes.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Case.
It won't be long.
Promise.
Personnel. Kenny, a motion to come back in session?
Slow move.
Motion by Director Dorsey, second by Director Terevecchia, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We remain for personnel, we're now out at eight sixteen. Continuing on, Director Acid.
Item A, I move to approve the professional service agreement with McMillan Engineering Incorporated for service to provide additional top graph for the attention point of new elementary complex in the amount of twelve hundred dollars.
By Director Acid, second by Director Terevecchia, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Acid?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Beshear?
Yes.
Mr. Delaro?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Here, yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Terevecchia?
Yes.
Item B, I move to hire Steel City Turf LLC for lawn care services for the athletic fields.
Motion by Director Acid, second by Director Terevecchia, questions? Roll call please.
Mrs. Terevecchia?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delaro?
Yes.
Mr. Beshear?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Acid?
Yes. Item C, I move to approve Hiller, the Hiller estimating project at a cost of sixteen thousand nine hundred dollars and a few more estimating services.
Second.
Motion by Director Acid, second by Director Terevecchia, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Acid?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Beshear?
Yes.
Mr. Delaro?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Terevecchia?
Yes.
Athletic Director Acid.
Item A, I move to hire Jennifer Novak as assistant middle school basketball coach for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year with compensation set on step one of the athletic salary scale, one thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Director Acid, second by Director Terevecchia, questions? Just a comment, our salaries are just a little bit low, roll call please.
Mrs. Terevecchia?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delaro?
Yes.
Mr. Beshear?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Acid?
Yes. Item B, I move to add Jocelyn Sanner as volunteer assistant girls softball coach for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year.
Motion by Director Acid, second by Director Terevecchia, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item C, I move to hire Bonnie Alessco as middle school head cheer coach for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year with compensation set on step two of the athletic salary scale, sixteen hundred dollars.
Motion by Director Acid, second by Director Terevecchia, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Acid?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Beshear?
Yes.
Mr. Delaro?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Terevecchia?
Yes.
Item D, I move to approve request from Tina Davison for, from the Brownsville Little League, Brownsville Youth League to use the high school softball field for the girls softball teams two thousand fourteen summer and fall seasons. No home games will be scheduled played until the high school girls team is finished with their season.
Second.
Motion by Director Acid, second by Director Terevecchia, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item E, I move to approve the job description for strength and conditioning equipment manager positions.
Second.
Motion by Director Acid, second by Director Terevecchia, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item M, I move to hire Kevin Kelly as strength and conditioning coach for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year with compensation set at twenty-five hundred dollar per the salary scale.
Motion by Director Acid? Second. Second by Director Bane, questions? Just, Mr. Acid, this is your recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, roll call please.
Mrs. Terevecchia?
Pass.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delaro?
Yes.
Mr. Beshear?
Ass.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Acid?
Yes.
Mrs. Terevecchia?
Remain passed.
Mr. Beshear?
Uh, yes.
Item G, I move to approve a, 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 excuse me, I move to approve a request from the Brownsville Basketball Alumni to use the gym for an alumni game on Saturday, May third, two thousand fourteen.
Motion by Director Acid, second by Director Terevecchia, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item H, I move to approve the agreement between Redstone Township and Brownsville Area School District for the use of the Redstone Township park ball field for the Brownsville Area Middle School girls softball team. The cost is three hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion by Director Acid, second by Director Terevecchia, questions? Just wanna add, maybe the middle school baseball team should start to play down there, I think we talked about that, it's a little bit too late. I don't know that the Phil, Field and Hiller is that super. Roll call please.
Mr. Acid?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Beshear?
Yes.
Mr. Delaro?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Terevecchia?
Yes.
Item I, I move to hire Brian Nicholson as assistant varsity track coach retroactive to the posting data, March twenty-first, two thousand fourteen posting, compensation set on step five of the athletic, athletic salary scale, eighteen hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion by Director Acid, second by Director Terevecchia, questions? Roll call please.
Mrs. Terevecchia?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delaro?
Yes.
Mr. Beshear?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Acid?
Yes.
Motion by Director Terevecchia, second by Director Bane, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?